The United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Lord, we come before you tonight humbly, God, thanking you again for an opportunity to represent our town. Let every vote be according to your perfect will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I'm sure you've heard of the national, seen the flag quite a bit this last couple of weeks with the Olympics on and all that kind of thing. So appreciate you coming out tonight and participating with us. Your opportunity to see firsthand what goes on in city business. First of all, I'd like to make sure we establish a quorum, and it appears that everyone is here, everyone's present, and let the record reflect that. Mr. Alderman Wood, yeah, Alderman Wood is absent. Alderman Wood is absent. So we do have a quorum with the remaining four. So, okay, appreciate y'all reminding me of that real quick. I did talk to her today. She's got other things going on. All right. So, public comments, if anyone needs to sign up and has not, if you would like to make a public comment, you should sign in and we'll get started. Anybody else need to sign? Okay, first on the list, and I will ask that you keep it somewhat concise. Ms. Barker, I'll let you go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Barker, forty-six, forty-nine, zero, sixty-nine, sorry about that. I just have a question for the board and you. Is the city responsible for making the gentleman that lives across the community center get rid of his privacy, natural privacy screening? And then the other question is, what ordinance or law was the justification for that?
Let me address that for the board. The gentleman that lives across the street with a natural privacy, what are you, what are you talking about?
The gentleman, okay, the man, it's in front of the community center. There's now, I guess you want to say debris, not debris, it's no longer there. He had a natural privacy screening. I'm just curious as to if-
So you're talking about the house where the land was cleared?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Okay. So first of all, that gentleman came into this office and made a statement and some complaints that the city, he was upset that the city was gonna take his land because he is not cleaning up and cutting his grass. He was told a lie by Ricky Withers. I called Mr. Withers and I asked him point blank, did you tell one or more people that the city had intention of taking somebody's property because they wouldn't cut their grass? And he said, yes. Now, y'all can ask him yourself. But that gentleman, lot was cleaned up on his own, or people engaged in that activity. Several there were potential aldermen as well, but that was done, to my knowledge, on the premise of a lot. The board has no authority, or the mayor has no authority, to take anyone's property because they won't cut their grass.
Gotcha.
Now, there is authority to find people.
Right.
There is authority for the board or the city to go in and clean somebody's property and add that to their tax debt.
Okay.
That can be done. There is ways to do that. It had nothing to do with the city. There was a group of people that got together, helped that man clean his yard. Under what premise, I don't know, but I do know firsthand that the man was lied to.
Gotcha.
What was the second question?
Uh, oh, you answered the question because there was no, obviously, there was no justification for that. All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Now, as you mentioned that, I will discuss a little bit about abandoned and blighted properties later on.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that. So, Ms. Ryan, if you'd like to speak.
Hello, I'm Linda Ryan. I spoke a couple times, but I'm just gonna reiterate, I'm gonna run for alderman, and I understand what's really going on with who I am. So just wanted to briefly reintroduce the lead, we bought our property in eight, in two thousand and eighteen. I'm recently retired.
Ms. Ryan, I'm gonna have to interrupt you on this. This is not a candidate forum. This is a question about the agenda and items on the agenda. Not to present your candidacy at a meeting, no ma'am. This is not the place for it. If you have a question, we'd be glad to address that.
Give my idea on what to do with the property tax.
Okay, if you wanna, if you want to discuss property tax, I will allow that.
Okay. My solution to the property tax is to set a base here. You just got an increase, keep that as your base here. Do a two percent increase each year unless the property is sold. That way you can budget, the people can budget, and they know what to expect. The taxes have gone up exponentially, thirteen point three percent in the last two and a half, three years since we, so they're just, I understand our rate, but what it's based on is going up. So there just needs to be a better calculation there.
Okay. I appreciate your comment, and I will tell everyone here, as we approach the budget planning session, in those times prior to that, there'll be a time that we will all be discussing tax revenues and expenditures and the new budget. So between now and then, the budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year is done. But you have some good points, and certainly remember that when we start doing our new budget, you might want to bring that up again to your fellow board members. And don't wait till then. You can call them anytime and talk to them about your concerns about property tax.
Well, I think the concern needs to be the county, they're the ones that's assessing our property and making your bill go up. It's not directed, which the city of South Tillo is charging. They, the assessment from the county, we don't assess in the city.
Yeah.
But as long as that's gonna skyrocket, so we don't get that money from the county.
Okay. Well, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna have a debate about the property tax. You made your point. It'll be another time and place for that as well. We're gonna move on with business. New business resolution, members of the board, I provided you a resolution twenty twenty-four oh one, adopting an internal control policy. This is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause that for a moment. We'll come back to that. We have not yet looked at our minutes because I didn't write that on the agenda. That's my fault. My fault. So, members of the board, you have in front of you minutes from the board meeting July two, twenty twenty-four. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Of course, we did not meet, by the way. We cancelled the meeting, basically.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Reed. Second by Alderman Carter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That is done. All right. And then you have before you meeting minutes from June four, twenty twenty-four. I'd entertain a motion for those minutes to be approved.
I make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Maynard. Second by Alderman Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Members of the board, we realize you've either picked up your packet earlier by hand delivery or by electronic sources, so you've had time to look over your information and what you have in front of you tonight. So, new business item where I stopped was resolution twenty twenty-four oh one, adopting an internal control policy. I would recommend, I would entertain a motion to accept this policy, and we can discuss it after the motions are made, but this is recommended to us by our auditors and state of Tennessee. So I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Reed. Second by Alderman Carter. Discussion. This is basically what it says. You have in your packet, basically what this does is protect the board and the city from having any kind of problem with finance, and it basically develops our internal control. We already have a purchasing policy that was attached. You remember, we made some motions not long ago to approve a purchasing policy. Then again, I think in May, we also did a policy about grants, and so this is just an additional policy that helps cover our internal control for finance. And so, any questions? Like I said, it was recommended to us by the auditor.
We wanna, we wanna use this, this MTEST example that I'm looking at.
Are you talking about the flow chart?
The flow chart has been updated.
Yeah, 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 the flow chart's been updated, but this is, yeah, this is the actual manual. This, this is the control manual that we're talking about that you presented. Right. And then in this manual, there is a flow chart that identifies the finance flow. I'm not sure exactly what page. Some of you guys have seen it, but it is probably the most secure way to make sure finances are correct. Everyone basically in South Tillo has always reported to the mayor, and it's the same way on that flow chart. So, as they say, the buck stops right here, and that helps protect us. And anything that the fire department spends or receives, same thing with police department, maintenance department, it all comes through our regular controls. Any additional questions? We'll have roll call vote on that. Alderman Carter, Alderman Morgan, Alderman Maynard, Alderman Reed. All right, the internal control has been passed. You can let the auditors know that we have passed that policy as well. I'd be happy to hear that. All right. Abandoned and blighted properties. There's nothing to vote on here, Alderman, but I did want to bring it back up, just for a brief discussion with you all, that we do have some properties that around town have been put on a list. It's not a list that's shared in the public. It's basically a list in my office that I get complaints about, and I've reviewed, I've had the previous fire chief review some properties. We haven't really taken a lot of action, but in recent weeks, that some of these properties on the list may end up resolving themselves because properties are potentially for sale. So, a potential buyer may buy these properties, and we may not have to do any on some of them. One example is Handy Corn. We hear that all the time, and that property is subject to sale. There's some real specific work going on up there today and over the last couple of months. And so, properties like that. Also, not far from Handy Corn is a little white house on Highway sixty-nine. It's got recently for sale sign. That was on the list. And then there's a few properties on Dorothy, and one of those is for sale. So, you know, one of, one of our concerns is that we have quite a few properties in town where the owner of the property doesn't live in South Tillo, and probably hadn't been to South Tillo in four or five years or more, and the property has just let to grow up and decay. Those are where our interests are to start with. And so, we're trying to, you know, do the right thing by trying to reach out to that particular owner. In some cases, the owner may have passed, property's tied up. We have a property on sixty-nine going toward Bass Springs that I think is high tower property across from Duane E. That lady who is responsible for that property lives in North Carolina, and it's about five or six, I say, family members involved in that property. And so, she's the only one that answers the phone. So she's trying to get the grass cut, but she's working from a long distance. So those kind of things, we're trying to go basically, I say, a little bit with kid's gloves or soft touch to let people know. Because some people, you know, there's a lady over that has a property on Cozy Loop that the people who own that property are out of the country on some kind of government contract, and they won't be back for a long time. But she got it bushed off and cleaned up last year, so. And that property not even in South Tillo, but I called her because some neighbors were complaining about it, you know. So, some people can do that. Some people don't have means. So just, if you have a property or anyone in the community has a concern about a property, they can certainly call our office and we'll look into it. But as I mentioned, Ms. Barker, there is a very specific process to deal with property issues. Cutting the grass is one thing. A unsafe structure is a separate thing, but there are policies, and we cannot go and just take somebody's property because somebody thinks that we just want their property. That is not how it works. I think I've heard in the community some things about eminent domain, eminent domain. There's a whole nother ball of wax in dealing with eminent domain, and our board has not discussed trying to do any of that. All we want to do is people to clean their property up, some of the neighbor's property to maintain its value. So anyway, there's, if you have any questions, y'all have any questions, just want to, just give you a little update. We can discuss it if you need to. Okay. All right. The next thing, this is a certification collection delinquent property tax. I have provided you as the board that a list of properties and owners that are delinquent for one to three years of property tax. You have a very specific list with their name and their address and how much they owe. This list has been provided to the comptroller's office of Tennessee because they requested us to certify and make note specifically who still owes property taxes. So this list I'm giving to you because it was required for us to send to the comptroller, and y'all need to know. So, what is the process from here? Well, some of the people on this list may not know they owe taxes. People may say, well, we've had them for three years. Well, I just gave you an example. People live out of state, have property, haven't been here, they haven't been to the county courthouse, just changed their mailing address that goes with the city tax, and all kind of issues. People may have died, family inherited the property. So just tell you that if it's any good news, in tax, is the first year, we have a lot of debt from people that didn't pay it off. The second year got better, the third year even better. So for the third year of property tax, we're only delinquent about three thousand dollars. For the town of South Tillo, there's a lot of money. Over a three-year period is about twenty thousand dollars. So some of these people owe both county and city tax. And y'all probably saw the paper this month. They're gonna start doing some things with that. There's probably gonna be a sale from the county standpoint around January with whatever they've got going on. But they published a list in the newspaper. Personally, I don't care to do that. It's not my goal to do that because our tax is relatively new. Ms. Vinaida and I are trying to reach out to certain property owners that we know on this list and remind them, hey, by the way, you know, your mortgage company didn't take care of your first year of property tax, and you might want to come up here. I personally text and called about ten people on this list myself. Well, they're, some of them are no longer on the list, and one of them just paid yesterday. But trying to let people know, because in talking to the delinquent tax attorney, which is the county's delinquent tax attorney, that for us to go to court over somebody, and you have an example, you see on the right-hand column, I think one, two, three, and then four, five, six, the third one owes three dollars, and the sixth one owes a dollar. Now, in no way in the world I'm gonna go to take somebody to court for a dollar. I mean, it just makes no sense. So we're trying to communicate, say, hey, look, just bring seven dollars up here and you're done, you know, and get, now you know. So there are a few that owe considerable amounts, in a couple of thousand. There may be a point in time where we have to take those people to a delinquent tax court, and there's a special attorney that does that. The city attorney does not do that. There is a specific delinquent tax attorney who we have to contract with. The law says the county delinquent tax attorney should handle this. But in talking to Ms. Martha, the one that's working on those collections, she says she doesn't understand the law to read that. So all the attorneys I've talked to all have different opinions, and so that's what court's about, to resolve whose opinion is right from the judge. So we're not gonna put this list in the paper unless y'all demand me to do that. But you have it, and if you know somebody on that list, wouldn't hurt, you know, I say personally know somebody, wouldn't hurt to call them. And we're trying to do as many as we can. We got a stack of stuff that's returned about just a few of wrong addresses. And primarily, the problem is people's address has not been changed at the courthouse. So if you do anything with your property and you change your address, you gotta go there. We can't do it locally. They gotta go to the courthouse. So, any questions in there? It's pretty cut and dry. We don't think there's any areas, but we've had one from this list that I called personally or text personally, and they said, oh, no, I got receipts. I said, oh, let's go back and look at it. So, you know, that may, may not be the thing. What the, what the comptroller will do, when the notices go out, it will say you are delinquent in your tax. You need to address this, you know, that kind of thing. So they're gonna help us with the collection process. Any, any question in there? All right, good deal, good deal. All right, we'll move right on. Before you, I have provided some information to you. One of those that I want to do first is the Delta Regional Authority, the DRA Strategic Planning Grant. It's a grant that we can apply for up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I put a little bit of extra information in this for the community and for the board, that what this is, is a strategic planning grant, kind of like what we did with our park plan, that this will give our community, all of our residents, all of our community leaders, our fire, our police, our utility districts, an opportunity to come to the table and talk about the things that we need to prioritize, we need to fix, things that we want to see over the next five years accomplished. They will also help us to identify funding sources. They realize we are a small community, and in the details of the DRA, that's part of what this grant is for, is one hundred percent, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from DRA. There is no match required for this. There's no match. And that this will be very good for our community, I believe, as we plan the future and all the things we have issues with. One of the things that I would tell you is, the example that I would use is the old school. You got two camps. A group of people want to tear it down, a group of people want to restore it. Both of those things cost money. We can't even go in with our own personnel to say, this structure is sound, it's worth rebuilding, or this structure should be demolished. We don't have a professional to do it. And doing this grant, that kind of plan will come into play, and people will be able to come to the table and say, hey, we first want to know if it's salvageable. So the West Tennessee Planning will help us identify a funding resource to get that part of the assessment done. We, we can't afford right now to have anybody go in there and look at. We, we don't have that kind of money to hire an engineer to say, hey, yeah, bill looks pretty good. We don't have that. We will have to have a grant to do that. So, this is a strategic planning grant for up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you approve it, I'll let them know tomorrow that they can apply for. This is a rotating grant, so if we don't get it, we just reapply if you approve of it. It's not guaranteed we'll get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but West Tennessee Planning feels pretty confident that we will. So I entertain a motion to apply for this grant because now we have a policy that I just can't go and apply for the grant without you saying yes. So I entertain a motion to accept this opportunity.
It's not a matching grant.
Not a matching grant. It's, it's required no money on the city to do this grant.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Reed. Second by Alderman Morgan. Discussion. Okay. I know y'all had this stuff and looked at it. I will tell you specifically, again, there's a document that I provided for you from West Tennessee Planning. It's a little bit of a roadmap of some things, but West Tennessee Planning will apply for this grant on the behalf of South Tillo, and then they will administer the grant along with Southwest Development. So if we receive this grant, Southwest Development, we pay them a fee to do this kind of work. They will administer the grant. So if a grant is received and administered, West Tennessee Planning will take care of all of the meetings, all of the community notices. They will help us to identify our capital improvements, our fire department needs, our police department, they help us do all of it. Now, just like we did a park plan, you can't do everything. They will help us identify areas that we can make changes in to improve our community, and they will help us to identify funding sources. Because tax dollars, we, we just don't have the money to do, you know, that's why things are likely run out in some cases. We don't have money to fix that. So no other questions? I've said a lot about it. We'll have a roll call vote on that. Alderman Morgan, Alderman Maynard, Alderman Reed.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Carter. Okay, we will apply for that grant. I will communicate with them tomorrow. All right. So while we talk about the grant, I just want to impress upon you, I know you received this. West Tennessee Planning has recently come to work with us, and this is, it doesn't cost us anything. It's fully funded, and a lot of it is connected to Tennessee Tech and Blue Over and things. But I have given you a little bit of a roadmap provided by West Tennessee Planning. We'll be posting this on our website about what we have done thus far and what we plan to do. And then the detailed report gives you all the other things about where we are in our process and all the different things going on. So speaking of that, one of the things that's going on, I applied for Brownfield's grant before we put our policy in place, and Paige Wally called me a month ago and said, we have received, I think it's nineteen thousand dollars in a Brownfield's grant. And so, the Brownfield grant we received is an identification grant. And so, West Tennessee Planning will help us with that. And what that means is that we will go back and look at the previous Brownfield grant, of what was done. You'll find these on both the website under the federal grant that was received and the Brownfield grant. We'll identify what has been done in past grants, and then we'll identify potential or real threats to a Brownfield. And what that means is contamination. So, give an example. Handy Corn, there's a crew up there right now digging up a gas pump. Coincidentally, that property is one of our concerns about what kind of state is it in. It's not a city problem, but the identification will cover private properties as well. And what they will do is say, look, yeah, we think, nothing's ever been done to these gas pumps, so they can research that for us. We will hire an engineer to do all of that with the eighteen thousand dollars. And then they will tell us, hey, for a future developer and how you help market your town in South Tillo, it'd be able to tell somebody at this property that this property is free of contaminants, that it just so happened by any coincidence that there's a crew up there doing this work under the state, and that property is probably gonna sell pretty soon. So I went up there and talked to these guys working. I said, hey, y'all work for the government or what? You know, so they have a government contract that helps do some similar things. But they're doing what we call a little bit of restructure remediation. It's not the same thing, but we have a number of properties that we're concerned about what condition they're in. We've got a couple of gas stations. What is their status? What have they done? We got a marina, we got an old HIS factory, and then in the documents, if you look online about previous Brownfields, they say certain things were done at the marina that weren't done. I know for a fact. And so, having somebody to come in and say, look, these properties are certainly something that should be addressed before a developer comes in, let's just say the marina, that property is for sale, that if we have somebody that comes in and wants to buy that property from Mr. Fontabarger, once they buy it, they're gonna be responsible for any contamination and cleanup. But if we can identify that that may be some potential there, this phase one grant may give that property owner an opportunity to clean that property up under phase two. So it's, it's about redevelopment for our community and giving an opportunity for a developer to come in and buy a property without having added costs. And so, this is a phase one grant. It's only to identify real or perceived property risk. So they won't be testing soil, they won't be going in and, you know, talking to the owner necessarily about what they've had on their property. They're gonna make a chart of sorts to deal with those properties. And we kind of know what they are, but they're gonna tell us anything that's ever been done, what kind of business was on this property, and what probably needs to take place. And so, that's, but this is, again, a hundred percent grant. We don't have to pay any money to do any of this. We will hire a, a engineer to come out and begin this process. Again, West Tennessee Planning will have it, so. I think it's a good thing to be able to, you know, we've got a lot of people coming in, a lot of opportunity, and Handy Corn is a great spot to do this. And just, that'd be just one property. We don't have to worry about that one anymore because it's taking care of itself, you know. Any questions about any of that roadmap or anything? We got a lot of things there. Or you have seen. So that's just, just for your information, so you have, we'll put these on our website, then where everybody can see that. Make it a public record of sorts. All right. Old business, real, just real quick, abandoned alleyways. The board of mayor, Alderman, Matt- The Board of Mayor Alderman met about abandoned alleyways about five different meetings, okay? Just to let you know that that is no business of the board at this point in time, it's gotta go to the planning commission. So, those on the planning commission will have to make some decisions about abandoned alleyways, and then they will send you a recommendation to the board to make a decision on it. So, it was kind of backwards in the first four meetings, I guess that's why nothing was ever done. Uh, so, anyway, that's, uh, just new for, oh, oh, new. Uh, uh, mayor's report, uh, before we get to our finance stuff, mayor's report that, um, we have received note from the comptroller's office. That our municipality is in compliance, uh, it appears to be in compliance with the act and your filing is complete for the year. So, this is about our audit, uh, thank you so much to Ms. Jackson for the diligent work and helping us prepare our audit and getting that, uh, submitted. And so, uh, we are in compliance with all of those things that need to be done financially, so, y'all can give her a round of applause and bow to her back. So, that's, that's a big thing. Uh, Chief Bruce is working his other job this evening, so there is no department report from him, I don't have anything that he has left me. And Chief Graves is working on another matter, uh, while we're here tonight, uh, Maynard, y'all have anything? Uh, okay, uh, Senior Citizen Center, y'all have anything? Okay, there is a senior expo coming up for Harding County, I don't know if you saw that, we'll try to get that posted out, so, like they did last year. I got you, just come out today, I think, senior expo coming up and, um, let's see, I think that's all on the poll, what about Alderman reports? We got one report from, uh, an Alderman, but at that time with the private organization doing a River Run.
Yeah, uh, Chester Hill, we had down here, it was, um, pretty great turnout, we saw the interview to hand, hands that went out and, um. Donated to the city was, you all had to help me with that total, I forgot exactly what it was.
Twenty-five eighty-four, I think.
Twenty-five eighty-four, yeah. Twenty-five hundred and eighty-four dollars, uh, was donated to the city.
That's not the city.
Had no responsibility on any of it, the t-shirts were paid for out of the initial money, uh, from sponsors. We had a lot of really great small, uh, business participation, uh, Tim Little, always a great sponsor for us, he always is, uh, willing, go at mile break, your business did. Just a lot, you know, so, anyway, uh, do have a few t-shirts, I can, I'm gonna set up for ten dollars, please be like one.
Yeah, okay.
So, see me.
Yeah, fantastic, well, so, a little piece of this activity at the landing, that, um, the, the Center for Rural Innovation is gonna be doing a survey. Economic, uh, economic impact survey at the landing during the Labor Day weekend. And so, this survey is to help us identify how important that landing is to our city as far as tax revenue or sales tax and things like, you know, where do they stay? How much money they spend when they're here and things like that, so they will do this survey free of charge. University of, of, uh, Tennessee Tech University, Center for Rural Innovation, they will do it there and then we'll do that survey again for River Day to identify that economic impact. They're putting it together, it's gonna be coming out real quick, so, one of those QR code deals, you take a picture of it and fill it out four or five questions, we get some data back. So, I think it's really important to know for the community to know, um, what kind of revenue that brings to our area.
It's a lot of heat, I just wanted to take a look at it over the, the landing and the property and everything, but it is a great source for this town and the history of it, you know.
All right, okay, anything else, Alderman, I think that's pretty much it, I think I got everybody. All right, let's look at our financial report, um, you have that in front of you, the, uh, statement of revenue and expenditures. Uh, we've had a couple of questions lately about, uh, revenues and expenditure that I, I, I know was probably hard for some people in the community to grasp about the cost of things and what we do and, you know, uh. We spend a lot of money on things you can't touch and you can't see, because there's things like insurance and bonds and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, this detailed report, if anybody wants it, of course, you know, there's an easy way to get it. Uh, for the board, you can see, uh, that we spent a little bit more this month than we did, than we, uh, brought in. And I'm looking at page five, this is really the nitty gritty of it, for our current month of, uh, July, we spent about four thousand dollars more than what we received. Uh, we've been getting a lot of tax money in and then for the year to date, it's the same thing, it's, uh, about four thousand dollars below what we expected. But we had some added costs and if you look at your detailed report, you can see some of those things through there. Um, uh, I think we had some Southwest memberships and things come due, um, again, you can't see it, but they do a lot for us in administering grants and things like that, uh, people don't, don't realize. So, y'all, did y'all have any specific questions about the revenue, uh, reports and, uh, expenditures or anything? It's been a typical month, other than we spent a little bit more than was brought in, which is not good, but I think this is the first month that that has occurred in several months, so.
Usually we wash out.
Yeah, if you look at the end number, uh, where it says remaining amount, we're, we're in good shape, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna come out in the black so it's, uh, with our budget. But, uh, we still, as a small community with limited resources, we've really gotta watch our spending. And when we have emergencies that, you know, we just have to, certain things we have to do, I'll give you an example, emergency we had this week. Air condition went out in the fire hall office, they were doing a train, had to call emergency service. And, uh, we found out, just, I'm not a mechanic on air condition, but, uh, there were two filters in the air condition on outside of the building. Probably been there according to the technician since the air condition was put in. You had to take the side of the air condition panel out, you know, like some of you have at home, you get it outside, you're out, you had to take a panel off and get in there and take a filter out. And he said those should have never even been left in there when it was put in, but we didn't know, and if you want to see them, I got them in the fire hall, uh, the old building. He put new filters in, a hundred and fifty bucks later, we changed the filter, but we didn't know anymore, I mean, it's just one of those things we have. Uh, doctor's office, we've had some things going on up there, had, uh, we're trying to, you know, get that thing prepped up to recruit a doctor. Water didn't work, air condition didn't work, when we got the air condition fixed, uh, one local HVAC technician told us he was gonna have to have a compressor replaced, two to four thousand dollars. And I said, holy moly, so we called a few more people we know and, uh, a local, uh, he doesn't live here, but he has property here, he came up and said, let me look at it. So, sure enough, I think it was like a hundred dollars to two hundred bucks, and he got, he, we had some wires burnt out on it and a, some kind of line tag was stuck. He fixed it for like two hundred bucks and it's chilling over there now, got it turned off and nobody's in there, but it works. And, uh, we're gonna have to replace the water heater over there because we had frozen black and stuff and we got some things going now, but it's not costing us nearly as much. And so, we do have people that may not live in the city, and this particular gentleman doesn't live in the city nor does he pay taxes, but he's comes up here all the time. And he learned to have to help us to do these kind of things, and so, we've got a lot of community members that do those things. Uh, they, they help and pitch in where they have specific skill and knowledge because they know we can't afford to do everything by ourselves. Uh, just like Chief Bruce, he does a lot of repair stuff for the fire department because he knows how to do it, didn't cost us anything. We don't pay him to do it, but he's just doing it as a service as far as being fire chief, so, you know. All right, so, uh, uh, if you don't have any additional questions about the budget, you can see money in the bank on the account balances page. Of course, uh, some of this total of three hundred thousand dollars is the fire department grant. You'll see that figure go up with additional grants we receive, uh, park plan, uh, the park grant will be coming out here this month about the award for that. Uh, and then, you know, Brownfield grant, then the other grant may be August or February or somewhere, I don't know, so. Anyway, that's, that's your financial report, we are in good shape financially, uh, but like, like everybody else, we need to, uh, watch our spending. Uh, any additional questions for the board? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Morgan, second by Alderman Maynard and everyone else. Appreciate it, thank you all for coming up.